Progress with the downtown hotel. Noel Anderson, are you on deck?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Edwin. His team is here to give you an update.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having us. And so we wanted to give you an update on where we're at in terms of the project, status of everything and those kinds of things. So that's kind of why we're here today. A couple of things relative to the project is that we are very close to finalizing all the legal documents. We've been working with the city attorney and title. We have a few minor title issues that are being resolved, survey, things like that. So I think we're very, very close to having those finalized. We've engaged Envision Architects, as some of you may know them locally. They are working on both the convention center renovation project as well as the hotel project. We have completed at this point all of the plans for the interior lobby of the hotel, all the guest room floors and the guest rooms in terms of the hotel itself. And some preliminary plans have been started in terms of the convention center. As it relates to, excuse me, as it relates to the convention center plans, the interesting thing by working with Envision is that they have a considerable amount of in-depth knowledge of the convention center. And one of the things that we found which we really, really like is photos from the convention center when it was originally built and designed in the early 70s or late 70s. And a lot of what we're actually looking at doing and some of the design and the aspects and features of that are actually going back to some of the original design. Open ceilings, open concept, which gives you more sense of flow and space and things like that. So we should have some updated plans on that shortly to be actually, to be able to present you with some more in-depth plans of what's happening with the convention center aspect of this. Additionally to that, we've engaged Birch Manufacturing here in the Waterloo market. And they are doing custom case goods and furniture for all of the guest rooms. It's about a million dollar project which will go towards purchasing from a local contractor and local supplier which helps to benefit the local economy and as well helps with local jobs. We love the people over at Birch and the designs they've come up with for custom furnishings and things like that are fabulous. So we're really excited to see that and to see that finalized hopefully here in about three weeks. They'll have the first line of furniture coming off the lines and we'll have model rooms set up so you guys can actually come by and take a look at those. In terms of the overall project, we do have commitment for financing at this point. We have $15.8 million approved for financing for construction of the project. That gives us all the construction funds that we need for both the entire hotel as well as the convention center space. You know, we are probably, I'd say, two weeks to two and a half, maybe three weeks away from closing. The only condition at this point to our financing is the completion of the appraisal by CBRE. And that process was started two weeks ago. So as soon as CBRE has finalized the appraisal, and assuming we don't have appraisal issues, which we don't foresee any, neither do they, then we'll actually be going through the closing process and finalizing that and starting construction with the plan to actually start construction within 30 days of closing. So we're on a pretty tight timeframe and pretty tight schedule. And our architects are very confident that we can meet that, get everything submitted to planning and development, get the approvals from everyone as well as the downtown community, and then start with this project and move forward. Now, having said all of that, the only major change, and I don't see it as a major negative, but a major positive change, is when we first came to council and we first came to the city, we had really focused heavily on our partnership with Hotel RL and Red Lion. We felt like because of our partnership and our relationship with Red Lion and our relationship with RL and other projects that we have, that that would be a good fit. And we looked at that for what we were doing with Waterloo and what we were doing with the downtown hotel. Our focus has not changed when it comes to Red Lion. We had lunch with Greg Mount last week, the president of the company. We're still very focused on working with them, but we have made a significant change when it comes to the hotel here in Waterloo. We looked at a number of options and a number of aspects. And we ultimately made a decision to rebrand the property and it will actually be known as the Hotel Fourth in Waterloo. This will be affiliated with Trademark as opposed to Hotel RL. The Trademark affiliation is owned by Wyndham. It is a European brand that's based in Europe that is now being brought into the United States. And what it gives us the ability to do and the benefit that we have a little bit over where we are at with RL is national and international presence, okay? With Trademark, we're affiliated with Wyndham Rewards, which gives us the top-producing frequent stay and frequent travel program in the United States, okay? So that's number one. Number two, it affiliates us not only with Trademark, which already has a major presence internationally, Dolce, which is an international presence, Trip Hotels, which has an international presence, and Wyndham Hotels, which has an international presence. So we felt that for a corporate market, when we looked at what we were doing with Waterloo, we have all the independence of doing everything we wanted to do about a fabulous boutique project, and that's still the direction we're going. The only change to that is actually becoming an affiliate of Trademark. And we feel like that's a great project in terms of how we're doing that with Waterloo and what that means for the hotel itself. It competes head to head and gives us the ability to go after the interstate hotels, the Fairfield that we have in town, the Hilton Garden Inn that you have in town, the Marriott that's coming to town, with a rewards and frequent stay program that is unparalleled, okay? We can go head to head with them for corporate guests, which is what we need in addition to the convention services and things like that that we're offering at the hotel. So in addition to me standing up here talking and running through my three minutes, which I probably have already gone through, I did also want to introduce to you guys Rich Eden, who is the Regional Vice President and Director of Wyndham, and let him talk to you for a few minutes about Wyndham and the Trademark brand and where we're heading with that as well. So if you have questions for him, so if nobody has any objections, I'll introduce Rich this time and let him talk. And just an FYI, you might want to turn the timer on because he tends.
(laughter) My salesperson doesn't talk a lot, but thank you for your time and a pleasure to be here with you guys. We wanted to just come in and see if there was any questions you had and describe to you a little bit about what Trademark is all about, because most of you probably haven't heard of it and probably until about nine months ago, we hadn't either. And it's actually a new brand within Wyndham. So if you know Wyndham Hotels, we're a company that actually now encompasses 20 brands globally. So we have anything from the economy all the way up to like Wyndham grands and what Trademark is being. So Trademark is our new brand. And really what Trademark is, is we're taking hotels that have a history, that have a story to be told, and kind of giving them a soft brand like some of the other brands with Curiel from Hilton and things of that nature. So what we're doing is it's, you're going to compete in the upper scale of hotels and it's going to be a hotel like Waterloo that has a story, that has some history. It's not going to be your Days Inn of the world, for example, which is one of our 20 brands. It's going to compete against, you know, the Hiltons of the world, the Marriotts of the world, but it's going to have that unique presence. So I often describe it as, and this is not one of our trademarks, but I'll use the story of the Drake Hotel in Chicago. Everybody knows the name, the Drake, but it needs some affiliation. So they have a soft brand on that hotel. Same thing with Trademark. So with Wyndham being the largest hotel company in the world, we have over 7,800 domestically as well. Trademark is our launch brand for this, or is going to be launched by the end of the year. We're currently selling the franchises right now, and then we'll probably have about 15 in the U.S. open by year's end. So we're really excited at the partnership and these guys seeing what Wyndham is all about, what Trademark is going to be all about, and getting in at that bottom level. And then we're backed up by Wyndham Rewards, which if you're not a Wyndham Rewards member, I'll give you the little pitch, and this is where you want to set the timer, because Wyndham Rewards is the number one loyalty program in the country right now. So everybody thinks of Marriott and Starwood and Holiday Inn. And those are great programs, but we've been named by U.S. News and World Report and Wall Street Journal as the number one program. Because our program, you can say across our 20 brands, so whether you're a Days Inn guy or a Super Eight guy or gal, you can start earning points at those hotels, but you can use them at a trademark. You can use them at a Wyndham resort, say Puerto Rico, probably not the best example today, but we have hotels across the world. Or part of our timeshare unit, we also own RCI timeshares and resorts. So we can give you a room at 125,000 different locations at a very, very affordable redemption, which is 15,000 points. The competitors like Marriott, which is in second place, you know, they're for that same hotel room or that same room somewhere overseas is going to be about 100,000. So it's, you can see the strength of the program, and we're going to probably maintain it again this year with U.S. News and World Report. We kind of thought it might slip this year, but all indications are we're going to be named number one again. So it's a great program and we're excited to be with this partnership here as well. I'm sure I probably skipped some stuff. And we have the handouts that I provided for you that, talk a little bit about what Trademark, what we're envisioning it to be, and then some on Wyndham Rewards there as well. I don't know if there's any questions or...
Didn't we have a Wyndham on the south side of Cedar Falls? Wasn't there a Wyndham out there?
I don't think so. Yeah, not a full-service brand. So Wyndham itself, so if you're going to be like a, we have hotels that are by Wyndham. So like a Microtow, so of our 20 brands, certain brands have the designation of by Wyndham. So like a Wingate by Wyndham or a Microtow by Wyndham. But then we also have the Days Inn, Super Eights, Travelages of the world. So we're all one big happy family, but then certain ones do have the tagline of Wyndham. But in order to be a Wyndham, you have to be a full-service product, usually about 100 rooms or larger on the full-scale side.
I see, okay. Anyone else here have any questions?
How about Hilton points? Were they there?
Not with our company. We're Hilton, I think, is number five or number six, believe it or not, on the pecking order. And a new, if you Google it or if I get some emails, I can email you, a new Wall Street news article just came out on Wednesday of last week talking about the richest programs out there. We were number one. The closest competitor was Starwood and Marriott, and they are half, when they kind of do redemptions, we are at over a 16% value and Marriott was at an 8.8. So we've blown those out of the water. It's still a good program, don't get me wrong. Hilton's a great company, great program, but we just happen to be better and bigger.
Anyone else?
Sure. Having nothing to do with the name of the hotel, but I would, you know, one of you two mentioned something about the history of Waterloo, the great history we have here. And I think on the agenda recently, we talked about getting a, applying for a grant for certain neighborhoods in Waterloo. And this is more for Mr. Leslie than for you. But again, I would really encourage you, now that you've been in Waterloo for a little while, to rethink your idea of changing the name of the convention center, because I don't think there is a greater name that you could use than the five Sullivan brothers. And I know you've heard me say that before, but I just want to say it one more time. Thanks.
I promise we've considered it over and over. And I think that we still have some plans that when we release them for the convention center and show you what we're doing with that and the plaza, I think that everybody will be very pleased with what we're actually proposing to do. And I think that that'll help you in terms of getting comfortable with that process, if that makes sense. Any other questions? Anybody have any questions relative to the hotel, what we're doing, where we're headed?
I think you've got it covered for today.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion to second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Let's call our finance committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here. Mr. Chairman, if I can, I'd make the approval of the agenda and approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2017 as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda and minutes. Any questions or discussion on either one of those?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those pass. Travel requests, we have three.
Mr. Mayor, I'll take, or Mr. Chairman, I'll take those. Mayor Quentin Hart to attend the meeting. Cedar Valley Coalition Destination Washington, D.C. dates April 22nd through the 25th, 2018. Mountain not to exceed $2,360. Captain Mollus to attend class on 2017 Iowa Homeland Security Conference in Ankeny, Iowa, date October 16th through the 17th. Mountain not to exceed $410. And then a request from the interim Public Works Director for authorization to sell vehicles taken out of service.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second on the two travel requests and requests from the Public Works Director. Any questions on either of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those pass. Pre-offs.
Mr. Chairman, pre-authorization to spend over $1,000. Airport, $3,127 plus $300 shipping and handling for authorization to purchase the Cryotech E36 runway de-icing fluid and two totes. Clerk's office, $12,875. Annual contract for Laserfish software assurance and phone support from December 18th, 2017 through December 7th, 2018. Leisure services, $11,550. Advertising to promote Cedar Valley Sports Plex, your Monday Night Football, MLB Playoffs, college football bowls, and other various programming. Leisure services, $1,700 plus $200 shipping and handling to purchase the used Hammer Strength Smith machine for the weight room at the Sports Plex. Leisure services, $2,638.88 for the ADA compliant seating for handicapped seating areas at Young Arena. Leisure services, $4,740 for signage for Young Arena concession areas. Leisure services, $3,474.78 for the purchase of two prairie pathways interpretive signs. MIS, $1,226.76 for a Dell laptop for Technology Department. Planning, $2,800. Appraisal services for land adjacent to 1515 Black Hawk Street and land across the street from 45 West Jefferson Street at a cost of $1,400 each. Sewer department, $14,478.65 plus $300 shipping and handling for the electrical drive unit for the Easton RWW pump number one. Traffic operations, $5,700. To purchase four solar flashing beacons, 12-inch red LEDs and mounting hardware. And lastly, traffic operations, $1,584 to purchase one three-section signal head with LEDs and hardware.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on all the pre-offs. Any of those that you need clarification on?
No. Good information.
Mr. Chairman, if we could get an explanation for leisure services for the signage for the Young Arena concession area.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. We're trying to freshen up the signage as you remember from the new contract we have with the Blackhawks. We're doing all the food now, so we're kind of rebranding with the refreshed signage around all our concession stands. So basically just to spruce it up and hopefully increase sales.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Bill's payment today, we do not have any budget light item amendments, but the bill's payment is $2,260,110.72. That's 2,260,110.72.
Second.
Motion, a second on bill's payment. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Second.
Motion, a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to this evening's city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
All right. Right now is our moment of silence. If you would please stand with me as we observe a moment of silence. All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by Chris Youngblood, Director of Technology.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You may now be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of October 2nd, 2017 regular session as proposed.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda and minutes. All right, first up, we have a, it is Fire Prevention Week, so I would like to call up Chief Traylor to join me. All right, this is Fire Prevention Week. And so I would like to read the following proclamation. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas the City of Waterloo, Iowa was committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Waterloo. And whereas U.S. fire departments responded to 365,000, 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, whereas U.S. homes resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority or 78% of all U.S. fire deaths. And whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions. And whereas many of today's products and furnishing produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it possible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. And whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household and include two exits from every room in the home and a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," "Every Second Count, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all the members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through the 14th as 2017 Fire Prevention Week. So what a great day, also a little bit earlier mixed with the proclamation today. Chief, tell us a little bit about what's happening.
Sure. Excuse me. How we kick off our Fire Prevention Week every year is with our firefighter memorial. And we hosted a ceremony yesterday at our fire station where we honored the Waterloo fire members that died in the light in duty as well as active-duty deaths. Our honor guard puts that ceremony on and we had fabulous weather. We had our 1921 fire truck down there as a backdrop. We're pretty proud of that. We got it running and drove it down from Station 6. So it was just a real special event. Today, in cooperation with the Waterloo Exchange Club, we had our firefighter of the year award as well as our paramedic of the year. And we're proud to announce that our 2017 firefighter of the year was named as Greg Freshwater. His parents, Jeff and Tina, were at the ceremony to accept that award. And our paramedic of the year for 2017 was Ian Wass. Ian's wife, Jess, and their two kids were there. So it was a great time. The Waterloo Exchange Club does a great job in helping us honor our personnel. This week, tomorrow, the fire station, we're opening, having an open house. We're hosting that tomorrow between 3:30 and 6:30 p.m. We're going to have a number of demonstrations, including a vehicle extrication demonstration. We're going to tear apart a car, and we think that might be interesting for some people to watch. We're also going to have our technical rope rescue team there. We're going to do some rappelling off Station 1. And we're also going to have our hazardous materials response vehicle. That's our big tractor and trailer there for people to take a look at as well. We have State Farm coming out. They're helping us sponsor that event. They're going to have their prize wheel there. We're going to have refreshments, hot dogs, chips, so we hope people come on out. Thank you.
All right, now where was that at again?
The location?
So we're hosting at 425 East Third, Fire Headquarters, right down, our main downtown station, between 3:30 and 6:30. We hope you come out.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you for your leadership, Chief, as well. All right, thank you. And right now, I think we are joined by a few guests this evening. I'd like to call up Alan Heisterkamp and the Swedish delegation and others. I think we may be able to fit inside of here, so if you want to come up for our International Mentors in Violence Prevention Month. Come on up. How are you? Nice to meet you. Hello, how are you? Welcome, welcome. Come on in, find a place to stand over here somewhere. You got either side. Couldn't leave me hanging. All right, we are joined by Mayor Eba as well, so absolutely welcome. So let me see. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas harm and abuse occur within relationships in communities throughout the world, and when communities fall short of providing social and emotional security and physical safety for all its members, rebuilding, support, and promoting positive change needs to occur. And whereas a solution to the erosion of civic engagement involves rebuilding the social fabrics of communities through leadership and mentoring. And whereas mentoring supports healthy and positive peer networks among individuals and the norms of reciprocity and trustworthiness that arise from them. And whereas the violence and abuse are due to an imbalance of power and control in relationships causing the erosion and breakdown of healthy interpersonal connections. And whereas a remedy to reduce and end bullying and violence is to institutionalize positive leadership and mentoring to increase our sense of loyalty and connectedness amongst friends, classmates, teammates, family members, neighbors, and to those in need of help and support. And whereas mentors in violence prevention teaches youth and adults to be aware of violence and potentially harmful words, attitudes, and behaviors, and then supports bystanders to safely, safely and actively engage in de-escalating, diffusing, and reducing the acceleration of harm and abuse. And whereas everyone has a part in making our environment safe for all, free from harm, and in all forms of abuse. Now I therefore, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim October 2017 International Mentors in Violence Prevention Month, and urge everyone to support this movement of creating a critical mass of like-minded youth, adults, family members, community and business leaders, and organize coalitions working together and supporting each other in challenging and confronting social norms that support violence and abuse in its all forms. All right. So Mayor, welcome. Who is, are you the spokesperson?
I'm the spokesperson, yeah. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Eber Sklin, and I'm the mayor of the municipality Budskirka, which is placed 30 kilometers south of Stockholm, which is the capital of Sweden. And we're here today visiting a large group of 34 people. Of course, our mentors is the biggest reasons why we are here. But the background is about five years ago, we realized that in a Swedish context, violence in our schools had increased and become more gross, and the children that took to violence were getting younger and younger, and we really had to do something. We also realized that the key to success are how we collaborate between schools and the social workers, police, and fire department. We needed to stop working just side by side and instead find a manner to work strategically and practically together. Out of recommendation, we came across the work of mentors in violence prevention, and we were impressed. Of course, the thing we really got hooked on was the fact that how you work with your mentors and to educate young people to become role models in society and to change the future is really inspiring. And that's how our journey started. We've been working effectively about three years now coming. We can see the, how it affects our society and it's growing, and we can see the impact that our mentors has in our community. It's a little vase, and it's the shape of our municipality. So when you look at it, you can remember us. So, thank you so much for having you. Thank you.
We, we will, are absolutely looking forward to conversations this week. We're so thankful that all of your young adults are here to learn about what we're doing here, but it's not about us, you just learning from us. It's about us sharing ideas as well. So we're so grateful you're here. We look for a positive, powerful week this week, and thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. We will, are absolutely looking forward to conversations this week. We're so thankful that all of your young adults are here to learn about what we're doing here, but it's not about us, you just learning from us. It's about us sharing ideas as well. So we're so grateful you're here. We look for a positive, powerful week this week, and thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. Oh, we have one other. The swearing in of new police officers, Charles Nichols and Jerry Barrett. Could you come on up?
All right. Come on up, Ren. See ya.
All right. Welcome.
Hello. Hi. Thank you, Mayor. I wanna, first of all, these two young gentlemen have gone through a very extensive process to be offered jobs as Waterloo Police Officers. Interviews, written tests, physical agility, psychological, medical, and a very invasive and thorough background investigation. And we have with CJ Nichols and his wife, Ren. CJ's graduated locally from Waterloo East High School. He attended Hawkeye Community College. And we stole him from the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Department. He was a member of the Air Force and the Air National Guard. Jeremy comes to us from Johnstown. Matter of fact, the police chief from Johnstown called me unsolicited and wanted to know. He says, "He's one of my best. Are you gonna take him?" And I said, "Yeah, well, we are. We're gonna hire Jeremy to work for the Waterloo Police Department." Jeremy attended Columbus, here in Waterloo. He attended Upper Iowa University. He's a veteran of the Marines, and he served in Iraqi Freedom. And he's been with Johnstown for several years. So we have two experienced officers that we're hiring on at the Waterloo Police Department. Jeremy's daughter, Lexi, is here. So after the mayor reads a oath of office, I'm gonna hand the badges to Ren and Lexi, and you can hand them to your dad and your husband.
All right. Gentlemen, repeat after me. Well, I, and then state your name.
I, CJ Nichols, I, Jeremy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
In the City of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa.
In the City of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right. So first up, oral presentations is Mr. Charles Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm doing right now is I'm stepping back from last week when they.
Their name and your address.
Oh, sorry about that. Charles Pearson, 1750 Flower Street. Last week, I had a discussion about the National Park Service African American Civil Rights Grant, and I strongly felt like the purpose of the grant wasn't explained, so I felt like I'd tell my version of the grant application. And so basically, the City of Waterloo, fiscal year 2016 and 2017, adopted a resolution approving the submission of the National Park Service African American Civil Rights Grant application. Mayor Hart, for two years in a row, approved both applications for funding of the Iowa Civil Rights Trail Project with the focus on downtown Waterloo, Unity Neighborhood and Walnut Neighborhood. Instead, in 2016, Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, submitted the application for Waterloo African American Civil Rights Interpretive Phase 1 Project. The Phase 1 Project was a partnership between the City of Waterloo and the Grot Museum District. I was disappointed the Iowa Civil Rights Trail Project was not included. The application also never got approved. On October 2nd, 2017, I met with Mayor Hart to confirm his support of the Iowa Civil Rights Trail Project, and once again, he gave me his approval. But once again, Noel Anderson submitted the application to survey and complete a national register application for Smoky Row and the Triangle. The problem is Smoky Row was surveyed in 1988, and the triangle is just a design of the boundaries linked to the railroad yard. In 2015, I started a State of Iowa African American Civil Rights Site Inventory for the Iowa Civil Rights Trail Project. The first 11 sites I evaluated were locations visited by slain humanitarian and US civil rights leader Martin Luther King Jr. Thanks to NMA Williams, the Cedar Valley is the first official regional designation in Iowa significant to Martin Luther King. For the Cedar Valley to get national recognition, the area needs more civil rights partner sites. That's when I created the Cedar Valley Civil Rights History Tour. This unique tour, which is self-guided, allows residents and tourists to be educated about Cedar Valley historic places of the civil rights movement. In June of 2015, I asked the City of Waterloo to approve green space and rename the bike trail along Martin Luther King Drive, Martin Luther King Jr. Nature Trail. The trail would need interpretive panels and a map to connect Unity Neighborhood to East High School and East High School to Walnut Neighborhood. While doing historic research of the area, two important things was discovered. In July of 1988, the City of Waterloo did a multiple property listing of historical and architectural resources. A railroad settlement called Smoky Row was listed in the historical context of transportation in Waterloo, Iowa. The property type was steam and electric railroad buildings and structures. Smoky Row was listed as significant worker housing related directly to the railroads north of the Illinois Central tracks, where many of the modest buildings are either altered or missing. The only property in Waterloo left tied to Smoky Row is the railroad chapel at 101 Albany Street. In 1897, the chapel, the chapel was across from the Illinois Central shops. It was moved several blocks for use by a black congregation, and in 1914 into the black neighborhood. That black neighborhood in 2017 is Unity Neighborhood. In August of 1992, Walnut Neighborhood did a survey called the Walnut Street Historic District National Registers of Historic Places Evaluation. The evaluation included an Iowa site inventory listing, East High School as a property within the Walnut Neighborhood. The evaluation also connected Park Avenue to Walnut Neighborhood. Park Avenue has its own civil rights partner sites in downtown Waterloo, beginning with the YWCA. The only partner site in downtown Waterloo that needed an amendment was the Russell Lamson Hotel at 201 West 5th Street, where the King family stayed when they visited the Cedar Valley. In 2016, I presented the Cedar Valley Civil Rights Historic Places of the Civil Rights Movement at the Preserve Iowa Summit in Davenport, Iowa. The summit is also where I met keynote speaker Megan Brown, who has worked for the National Park Service as Chief of the State Tribal Local Plans and Grants Division in Washington, DC. At the summit, Ms. Brown wanted to speak with me about a new federal grant called the National Park Service African American Civil Rights Grant Program. She encouraged me to partner with the local government and apply for the funding, apply for funding for the Iowa Civil Rights Trail Project. The city I had chosen to launch the Iowa Civil Rights Trail was Waterloo, Iowa. Waterloo's Historical Preservation Commission had completed a historical survey and an Iowa site inventory, and been evaluated for a National Register of Historic Places District nomination in Walnut Neighborhood that included African American properties in the inventory. I saw this as a great opportunity for the Cedar Valley to get national recognition as a civil rights heritage area and destination. But unfortunately, the City of Waterloo, Waterloo Community Planning and Development Director doesn't understand the power of preservation.
Now, we have Jerry Schatzler that would like to talk about various topics.
I didn't count them again here this long, so I don't know if I'm gonna have a guest or not. And it's not high test either. Anyway, my main concern, or one concern was, when we re-innovated KWWL building, did any of that money come out of the little people like myself, taxpayers, property tax? Do we know?
Yeah. Is that your only question?
Well, I got several, but that's the first one.
All right. We, we keep it from going back and forth, so we give you your five minutes since you called in, so you come with your questions, and then we'll, we'll respond to them as.
Okay, the reason I ask, the reason I'm stating that is, we give a lot of money outside of Waterloo to KWWL people who are coming in here and making the big bucks, but they're not paying property tax in Waterloo, Iowa. They're paying it in Hudson, Iowa. The second thing I have, as long as you're getting these new policemen and new firemen, I'd like to see them, one of them be assigned strictly for a year to go out there and start writing tickets. There is more violations going out in them streets. You would not believe how bad it is. In fact, I was coming back one day from Target. A car was laying on their horn. I swore in a Bible, I looked in my rearview mirror, here was this woman steering her steering wheel with her knees, fixing her hair and laying on the horn, because I wasn't going fast enough. So I immediately slowed down to 14 miles an hour. And she did pass me with her knees right there. Okay. Also, we get this, who's first? The light changed, but you got a lot of people who will turn even though the light's gone red against them, hoping to beat the person out that's got the green light. So I guess what I'm saying, I'd like to see one of those people for a year be taken out there and say, you know, write tickets, have fun, don't worry about what people think, and don't give them second chances, and we'll throw it in the general fund, period. Then I'd like to see the fire department give us one person. And the people who park in handicap park is uncontrolled. If they're being mean and ugly, I don't say anything to them, but if they're a little like I am, then I'll say something to them. But a lot of that goes on out there, and I think that's a $200 and some dollar fine. No excuses, no second chances. They all know it. You know, lay it on them, put it in a general fund. Now, what would we do with this general fund? At the end of the year, the managers, and I assume you'll be the leader, Mayor, will decide what you're gonna do to this money. In other words, I don't care if firemen make $100,000 or $150,000, as long as they don't keep pushing down my property, or pushing up my property tax as a little person. And if you, it's gotta go to police and fire, so be it. Also, another thing we should look at, and I won't go on this one, because about 40 years ago, when I was taking courses in college, that's when the Cadillac got out with the big fin. I don't know, I won't say what they said that was for, or what it represented, but I see a lot of these big pickups out there, just awes me, this massive pickup, which means you gotta get your engineering people together and redesign the parking lots, or make the people who own the parking lots redesign them. I purposely parked down the center of a yellow line. I will not park in a, you know, another line, because you got these big pickups come in there, and they got maybe a half a foot to open their door. That's another thing that had me going here, and then I got. I would like to see it, if you're gonna work in the police department, and this is not anybody else's grandfathered in, so they don't have to worry, you gotta, you gotta live in Waterloo, period. You can't live outside of Waterloo, you gotta live in Waterloo. The minute you move out of Waterloo, you lose your job. It's real simple. That applies to all people in Waterloo, the new ones coming in. I would like to see that, because we got too many people that pick and choose where they're gonna live, and so we lose that property tax money. So that's the last, I guess that's the last thing, the most important thing. If you're gonna work in Waterloo and get a job here in Waterloo, then you gotta live in Waterloo. If you're gonna move out of Waterloo, then you're gonna lose that job. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schatzler. Noel, just really quickly, the monies for KWWL, I assume, came from a number of sources, but you wanna highlight that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. The funds, of course, they got some historic tax credits from the state and federal government. The local incentives came from Logan Tiff District and Logan Bonds that are repaid with the Tiff District, so it's technically repaid through the Tax and Income Financing District, which is all the properties that have been approved in that area.
And they spent some money themselves, right?
They, I believe they spent over $10 million, yes.
Themselves for this project. All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? State your name and address for the record. Thank you, Mr. Schatzler.
You're welcome.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. Is it subject of safety of stop signs coming up tonight? If it is, I'll wait.
It'll be a little bit later.
It is?
Yep.
Okay, I'll wait till then.
Uh, counts as your 20 seconds. Jim, I'm just messing with you, man. Yes, sir.
My name is Gerald Smith. I live at 122 Presley Circle, Waterloo. I'm looking for some answers to some questions in regard to how the city established the policy or procedure for fixing the potholes in the streets. I moved to Waterloo a year ago in July. Last year, the patch crews were out in February and March, but all the potholes was full of snow and ice and water. Within 48 hours, the patched material was back on the street and crumbles. Now that was an absolute waste of taxpayers' money. However, I would like to know who makes that call? Is it the city engineer? Is it city ordinance? Is it state law? You know, who, who makes this call that says, "This is the procedure we use for patching potholes"?
All right. Is that your only question, sir?
That's the only question I got.
All right. Can anybody answer? Sandy? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. We use a cold patch in the wintertime. If possible, we go out and blow out the, the potholes themselves and put the cold patch in, and that's the best we can do in the winter until, and that's the only material we can get in the wintertime, until like Asper opens in the spring, so we can get the hot patch.
And then, when it gets warmer, what do you do?
We go back out and redo it with hot patch where we pound it in and.
So in the winter, it's just to try to help them get by?
It's the best we can do, yes. It's what all cities use.
Okay. So Waterloo is not the only.
No.
City in the Union that does this?
No.
All right. Thank you, Sandy.
Last year, the patch crews were out in February and March, but all the potholes was full of snow and ice and water. Within forty-eight hours, the patch material was back on the street and crumbles. Now, that was an absolute waste of taxpayers' money. However, I would like to know who makes that call? Is it the city engineer? Is it city ordinance? Is it state law? You know, who, who makes this call that says this is the procedure we use for patching potholes?
Is that your only question, sir?
That's the only question I got.
All right, can anybody answer? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. We use a cold patch in the wintertime. If possible, we go out and blow out the, the potholes themselves and put the cold patch in, and that's the best we can do in the winter until, um, and that's the only material we can get in the wintertime until, like, Asper opens in the spring, so we can get the hot patch.
And then, um, when it gets warmer, what do you do?
We go back out and redo it with hot patch where we pound it in and...
So in the winter, it's just to try to help them get by?
It's the best we can do, yes. It's what all cities use.
Okay, so Waterloo is not the only...
No.
...city in the union that does this?
No.
All right, thank you, Sandy.
I have not seen a patch crew out since last March.
Do, uh, Mr., Mr. Smith, we, we don't go back and forth with staff. If you have, um, if you have a particular area that you would like to see something done to, then you can give Sandy, i-if you want Sandy to come out and have the crew come and take a look, we can do that. All you have to do is let her know, and she can get your address and come look at what you want her to look at.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if you'd come to my house and...
What's, tell me that address one more time?
122 Presley Circle.
122 Presley Circle. We'll get somebody out to take a look. Thank you, sir. Mr. Freshwater, is this in relation to the, um, what, is some, an item on the agenda?
No, it's not.
Okay.
My name is Jeff Freshwater. I live at 18669 Grundy Road in Hudson, rural Hudson. I was here in attendance at last Monday's council meeting and was witness to what I would deem a disgraceful dysfunction. I sat and watched as Mohammed stood at this podium, a highly educated man with advanced degrees in his field and respected expertise, and was forced to respond to cynical, condescending questions and comments, such as, why should we put up stop signs? Nobody stops at them anyway. Or your science is nothing but the flavor of the week. Why don't we just put four-way stops at every intersection? His report clearly explains his research, his data, and his conclusions, all based on fact and science using standard government software. His weeks-long research and study concluded traffic will flow smoother and safer with a four-way stop at that intersection, the only one that was studied. It was very clear that many of you never read the report and probably never even requested it prior to knowing it was even on the agenda. Many, some of you came here with an unformed, predisposed vote, clearly ignoring the facts. As public servants, your vote should be based on fact, evidence, cost, and gain to the public you serve, with safety of the citizenry being foremost, not your political ideology or your personal conflicts. As for Mr. Smith's to get on TV and say that it's all based on emotion and declare that we should take a much slower approach when it comes to public safety, shows a complete disrespect for Mohammed. The public he swore to serve also was disrespected. I've read the report. There's nothing emotional in it, nothing at all. It's collected data and scientific conclusion. Expert recommendation is all I saw. And as for the rest of you who sat here quietly as Mr. Schitt-Smith turned around and sarcastically and cynically, cynically pounded Mohammed for his honest work, remember, silence is affirmation. Shame on you, Mr. Smiths, for the way you treated Mohammed publicly here.
We don't go directly, directly at him.
Very well. Shame on all of you for letting him do it.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, I guess I'm AKA Mr. Negative. I have a question tonight and a comment, couple of questions and comment. I petition the city to develop a bicycle licensing program with a plate and a mandatory training to get the plate and a fee for the same. I observed numerous bicyclists ride right on through red lights, not really paying attention to the traffic. According to the Iowa Bicycle Coalition website, bicyclists are to obey the same laws as motor vehicles. Has a bicyclist ever been issued a citation for a violation? Like to see an answer on that. My second question is, what is the population of Waterloo, Mr. Mayor? Your Facebook page indicates seventy-one thousand, one hundred and fifty, however, the Waterloo Library today indicates in 2010, we had sixty-eight thousand, four oh six, and from the suburban, which is a county website, 2016 and 17, we have sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four, which compares to the federal census, which I looked up, at the same figure for 2017. I'm not sure the city does a census count, so what source should we assume is correct?
Is that all?
That's it. Thank you.
I don't know the frequency about bicycling, but Mr. Trokano is chief.
The Antroka Chief of Police, I'll get that information, Mayor. We have written a few.
Yep. And the seventy-one thousand comes from Lisa Skubel on the Chamber, uh, with regards to the number of where we're currently at, based upon whatever algorithms they use and the projections that we have for the next census, which, uh, census, uh, that came from the University of Northern Iowa, uh, talked about our population increasing as well, um, but also that millennials in that age range would be the highest growing population within our community. Yes, sir.
Sam Neal, 514 King Bard Boulevard here in Waterloo, about a hundred foot from Fletcher. And my concern is Fletcher, uh, we're now entering, depending on how you count, the sixth or seventh month to get a four, four block long street, uh, rebuilt, along with sewer utilities. I understand that. But, uh, I wasn't gonna speak on it, except I, when I got home today, there's nobody over there working. It's just empty. So my question is, are they gonna get it done? When are they gonna get it done? A lot of concerns because it isn't done. One is safety. Uh, a lot of cars are coming down King Bard Boulevard at a high rate of speed. One slid clear through the intersection into the park a few weeks ago. I hope I'm not done. But the, the other things are, is that I, I'm concerned about the quality. Uh, they are working from the north end of Fletcher, uh, working south toward West Forest, and they have all this heavy equipment on the new, uh, asphalt. And all this dirt and rock and stuff is, appears to be getting ground right into the, the new work surface. The other thing that is bothering me is that I'm told that next year, King Bard is going to be, uh, rebuilt with new sewer, which we need, and new, new utilities, city utilities there. But, uh, if you stand in the middle of the street on the north side of the Boulevard, you will see that, that at Fletcher, the, uh, sewer, the drain is about eighteen inches into the street. So if they draw that straight line right up, east up King Bard, we're not gonna have any room to park. I mean, somebody didn't look and see what it done. Visually, you can see it's not right. And there's been a number of things not right. One sewer not correctly hooked up, uh, just lots of little things that, that, that are not right at all. My concern is that we're not doing a good job, we're not using the resources we have. And the one other question I would have, do we compare these prices that we're getting to repair our streets to other communities to see that we're getting our bang for the buck? You know, because we, we only have one bidder, I understand, and we need to know if we're getting our bang for our buck. I think they're taking advantage of us.
All right, thank you. Dennis, probably, um, on that part, um, just make a notation for the, the sewer lines of, uh, that Mr. Neal indicated, but do you have an update on the Fletcher project?
This is Dennis Gans, Assistant City Engineer. Just an overall look at Fletcher. Uh, we did stage it to try to improve the access for the local residents as best we could. The current stage under construction, uh, well, there's actually two phases. One is from King Bard to Fourth, there's another from Fourth to Sunset. The segment from King Bard to Fourth, uh, is with weather conditions allowing work, um, nearing the installation of subgrain tile and rock base, which then follows, is followed by the curb and gutter and paving. So we do expect there won't be any problem at all getting that, uh, Fletcher completed, whether it's the stage between, um, King Bard and Fourth or between Fourth and Sunset. So we don't have any concerns about that not being completed. And as far as the issue with the drain, I'd be happy to meet with this gentleman in the field and review that.
I got his number, I'll give it to you. Yes, you do. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I just wanted to, uh, do a shout out to somebody that, uh, I met yesterday for the first time, and it happened with the unfortunate experience of losing my cellphone. And, uh, I learned, uh, quite quickly, uh, how, uh, a cellphone means so much in this day and age. Uh, but, uh, within a matter of an hour and a half, I had my cellphone back, and I met this young man, um, and his father and the rest of his family out where he was just starting a job, uh, at TJ Maxx. So I just wanted to, he would not take any reward, uh, money for, uh, finding that and turning it in, but I just wanna give a shout out to Sergio, and I know that TJ Maxx has one heck of a new employee that they're getting, so thank you, Sergio.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's items 1A through B6, and within that are the bill's payment. Bill's payment this week are two million, two hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and seventy-two cents. That's two comma, two, six, zero, comma, one, one, zero point, seven, two.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote yes, and I'd just also like to point out that for the tenth year in a row, I will be voting to spend the taxpayers' money to send the mayor to Washington, DC with the Cedar Valley Alliance.
Mr. Welker?
Yes. All right, thank you. Those items carry. Um, just, uh, real quickly, uh, recommendation for Scott Ruder from the Civil Service for plant maintenance mechanic, mechanic in the, uh, Waste Management Services. Is Scott here tonight? All right, all right. Could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication on notice of public hearing, and that's a request by Cardinal Construction, Inc. for a site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the construction of a twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety square foot warehouse office building, a twenty-five stall parking lot, and a four thousand square foot maintenance building located north of thirteen, eighteen Martin Road.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time? Any comments on file?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and to close the hearing and receive the, uh, recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079 is amended, City Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment on certain property located north of thirteen, eighteen Martin Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Item carries.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Mr. Anderson, uh, this project need to continue moving forward?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning and Development Director. I believe they would like to get out there and start moving some dirt as quickly as they can, so any help you can give towards that would be helpful.
All right, thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, number two passed. Uh, could someone take number three, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr., Mr. Welker?
Number three is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of a public hearing, and that's for the 2017 tree removal project. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. I assume no comments on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications from a contract, et cetera. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Deputy Clerk?
The engineer's estimate was thirty-five thousand dollars. The bidder was Wilson Tree Service of Cresco, Iowa, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And the second bidder was Twin City Tree Service LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, and his, the amount of bid was thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the numbers don't, aren't the same as what we have here.
So...
You just read that wrong. It's the same number.
Oh, yeah, I met it, read it off my minutes, sorry. Twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents.
You have something to say, Mr. Huddy? All right, all right, so we're good.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding the 2017 tree removal project bid to Wilson Tree Service of Cresco, Iowa, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents, and approving contract bond and certificates of insurance, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
All right, number four, Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing, which is the Abestis Abatement Services for properties located at eleven-hundred Grant Avenue and twenty-sixteen dash twenty-twenty Commercial Street.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against, or have questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr.?
Just real briefly, um, Councilman, uh, Lyd, and read that as twenty-sixteen and twenty-twenty. Is that correct, or is it two-sixteen to two-twenty Commercial?
All right, duly noted, two-sixteen to two-twenty. Are there any comments on file?
No.
Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council questions? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, madam deputy clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, madam deputy clerk?
The engineer's estimate for 1100 Grant Avenue was $15,000. The first bidder was AAA Budget Environmental, Inc., Monticello, Iowa. The bid was invalid.
The bid security was invalid?
The bid security was invalid. Do I need to read emails since? Um, the second bidder was Echo Midwest, Inc. of Hastings, Minnesota. The bid was $6,500 for 1100 Grant Avenue, and $51,000 for 216 through 220 Commercial Street. Active Thermal Concepts of Hiawatha, Iowa, bid $11,866 on 1100 Grant Avenue, and $29,890 on 216 through 220 Commercial Street.
And, and all of these, as you'll read, had a 5% bid security?
REW Services Corporation, Des Moines, Iowa, bid $14,873 for 1100 Grant Avenue, and $28,270 for 216 through 220 Commercial Street. Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa, bid $8,000 for 1100 Grant Avenue, and $28,270 for 216 through 220 Commercial Street. Advan, um, New Horizons LLC, Lincoln, Nebraska, bid $13,950 for 1100 Grant Avenue, and $52,890 for 216 through 220 Commercial Street. Abatement Specialist Cedar Rapids, Iowa, bid $11,335 for 1100 Grant Avenue, and $34,550 for 216 through 220 Commercial Street.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution awarding the asbestos abatement bid to ECCO Echo Midwest, Inc. of Hastings, Minnesota for asbestos abatement of 1100 Grant Avenue in the amount of $6,500. And REW Services Corporation of Des Moines, Iowa, for asbestos abatement services at 216-220 Commercial Street in the amount of $28,270, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Uh, could someone take? Number, uh, number, uh, five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number five is a motion received and filed approved publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the demolition services for 222 Water Street and 2... Excuse me, thank you, Walnut Street and 216 to 220 Commercial Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to these two items, and I assume no comments are on file? Yes, sir.
David Jarrett, 3145 West Forest Street. Uh, is 222 Walnut the House of Hope?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, I guess my question there is that that's the one where the grocery store's gonna go? Have those people found a place to live? Because I don't see enough development on the site on
Right.
Fifth Street?
Right, so...
To, uh, have them move?
Okay.
So are we gonna do it before they get to move?
Mr. Anderson, can you give us an update, please? Good question.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. The House of Hope is continuing to look at options for moving the residents of that. Right now, they're obviously being coordinated with this process. We have done the asbestos testing. Um, they believe they can also do the removal while they're in the building, um, obviously, and then the demolition will be contingent upon when they can find a new location, so they are looking at different options on that.
So the removal continues while they're staying there, and the demolition won't take place until they find location? So, uh, I know that we've reached out to, uh, several different places, um, trying to help work with that process too, so...
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to you close the hearing and receive and file oral comments?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if we could just maybe have, I got a couple of calls wondering about the property on Commercial Street, why it took us so long to get to this point? And I was wondering if maybe Mr. Anderson could just speak to that, to the, uh...
Process?
Yeah, folks at home.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, I know we just took the asbestos, uh, did the testing and did the, uh, the removal of that. Um, this is kind of the, the planned process we had for it, so I, I think we're right on schedule with where we were aiming.
Hasn't that been sitting vacant for several years? I mean, it seems like we've had a couple of fires down there, and that was, you know, the purpose of the, or the point of the questions I got.
Th- this is the dental studio, so this is not the castle apartments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So this is the one that was just...
This is the castle.
I think he just got out of there a couple of months back.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the House of Hope building. Excuse me, they have asbestos removal. If that's done while the folks are in there, does the city have any liability at all? Or is that all on the contractor? Do they assume all liability for asbestos removal? Especially if it's done while folks are living there? Or is there any possible way we would be on the hook of any kind of legal action if someone got sick?
Question, no liability or someone?
Good question.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director.
Speaking to the mic.
Unless, unless Dave Zellfer corrects me or anything, but they do have liability insurance and all that, so it should be on the contractor. Um, we've had a lot of discussions with the House of Hope, um, staff, um, to make them aware of, of how they're going to do it in a safe manner, obviously, for everyone. They have to follow OSHA standards and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Yes. He said yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Make a motion, receive and file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Deputy Clerk, reading of the bids.
The engineer's estimate for 222 Walnut Street was $35,000. The engineer's estimate for 216 through 220 Commercial Street is $25,000. All contractors had presented a bid security of 5%. The first bidder was Frickson Brothers Excavating of Evansdale, Iowa. Their bid was $38,000 for 222 Walnut Street, and $52,000 for 216 through 220 Commercial Street. Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa, bid $41,470 for Walnut Street, and $52,042.50 for Commercial Street. Active Thermal Concepts of Hiawatha, Iowa, bid $158,343 for Walnut Street, and $138,985 for Commercial Street. Lehman Trucking and Excavating Incorporated, Waterloo, Iowa, bid $45,320 for Walnut Street, and $28,630 for Commercial Street. Benton Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa, bid $38,900 for Walnut Street, and $37,900 for Commercial Street.
And all those had a 5% bid security as well. Uh, who?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding demolition services bid to Frickson Brothers Excavating of Evansdale, Iowa, in the amount of $38,000 for demolition services at 222 Water Street.
Walnut?
Walnut, I'm sorry, I'm stuck on that, aren't I? And Lehman, uh, Trucking and Excavating, Inc., in the amount of $28,630 for demolition services at 216 to 220 Commercial Street, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance, and instruct the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, madam clerk, madam deputy clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Uh, could someone take six, seven, and eight, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number six is a resolution approving a fiscal sponsorship agreement with Waterloo Community Foundation, Kingsley Neighborhood Association, and the City of Waterloo for Prospect Boulevard tree planting project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Plum Tech of Waterloo, Iowa, with the amount of $19,556, and approving payment of pay estimate number two, final project retainage, in the amount of $977.80, in conjunction with fiscal year 2017 replacement of roof-mounted air-conditioned units project for the general aviation terminal building at the Waterloo Regional Airport. And number eight is a resolution approving application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for renewal of a one-year permit to establish and sign a snowmobile trail within the right-of-way of state highways within the city limits of Waterloo.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I want to point out to, uh, number six, that is a, um, project spearheaded by my brother Tim and my brother Jim and Rick Smith. We're gonna raise money to replace the trees in, on Prospect Boulevard at no cost to the city.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Item carries, nine, ten, and eleven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Waterloo Community Foundation to establish a Waterloo Fire Rescue Memorial Fund and authorize the fire chief to execute said documents.
Excuse me, can you guys hear in the back? All right, Mr. Morrissey?
And number 10, a resolution authorizing a letter of support on behalf of a request received by American Airlines to require the enforcement of the United States Open Skies Agreements as currently written, thereby opposing unfair subsidization, subsidization by foreign flag carriers such as Emirates, Etihad Airways, and Qatar Airways, and authorize the mayor to draft and execute said document. And number 11, resolution approving closeout of fiscal year, uh, 2009 Economic Development Initiative Special Project B-09-SP-IA-0191 for the Chamberlain Manufacturing Plant Site.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Keith, could you give us about a 30-second? 30-second, um, idea of number 10?
Yes, good evening, Keith Caspari, Airport Director. What this request is, a request that we received by, uh, American Airlines to request support from many of the cities that they operate, uh, including Chambers, offices of the mayor, um, and, and various other... What's, what's been happening since 2004 is the United Arab Emirates has been pumping in and subsidizing by the tune of over $50 billion. The three airlines that you see here are Emirates, Etihad, and Qatar. And so what's been happening is really an unfair playing field for the three largest legacy and international carriers that's, that provides air service in the US. That's American Airlines, that's United Airlines, and that's Delta Airlines. So what you have is a government that is subsidizing the operation and cost to operate of those three UAE carriers in contrast with the US's airlines that have to pay the fees, have to pay, uh, significant, uh, millions of dollars per aircraft, whereas on the other side, if Emirates, Etihad, and Qatar wants a fleet of 777s to operate international routes, the government provides that for them.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Treelor, thank you, Keith.
Uh, Chief Treelor, thank you, Keith.
You bet.
Chief Treelor, uh, thirty seconds, uh, about what's taking place, Fire Prevention Week, so...
Pat Treelor, Fire Chief, uh, what's before you, uh, the resolution to approve Waterloo Co- Community Foundation, um, is to set up a, a, a scholarship fund that would assist us and to give awards to current Waterloo Fire members, uh, to pay for EMS schooling, whether it be paramedic school or EMT school. And we think it's an appropriate avenue to go with the Waterloo Community Foundation. We'd certainly work with the Freshwater family, uh, in conjunction with that, uh, with that fund.
All right, thank you. Right, uh, questions, counsel or anyone? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mister Morrissey?
Yes.
Mister Powers?
Yes.
Mister Lynn?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mister Welper?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, twelve and thirteen, please.
Mister Mayor.
Mister Amos?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the completion of a project and recommendation of project acceptance of work performed by Pella Roofing and Insulation of Vinton, Iowa, and approving payment of pay estimate number two, final project retainage in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents in conjunction with the roofing, rain gutters, and lighting improvements on hangar number five at Waterloo Regional Airport. Number thirteen is a resolution approving Second Amendment to Development Agreement with Beard to Bread LLC in the City of Waterloo to add additional costs associated with project for payment and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. And in regards to number twelve, I don't know if folks saw, uh, the airport was in the Des Moines Register, if I'm not mistaken, a little while ago, for all the activity and things that are taking place at our airport. So it's pretty significant. I don't know if it's ever happened before, but we're, uh, doing one of the largest projects we've probably done since the completion of the airport. Um, any, any questions about twelve or thirteen, counsel?
Mister Mayor?
Mister?
I have questions about twelve and thirteen. Uh, Keith, on number twelve, the, the airport board meeting, there was some concern about that roof was still leaking. Apparently we got that fixed on hangar number five.
Keith Caspari, Airport Director, uh, we are, we, we've got the majority of the leaks done. Uh, what we experienced last year was simply, uh, significant leakage for, uh, heavy, during heavy rains, especially during the winter season, that where the, the rain would bond to the surfaces of the aircraft. That's no longer gonna be a problem. Uh, we feel now that the work that we're doing to tighten up that roof, uh, via the, uh, the, uh, pillar insulation project will help this long-term and actually, I think, provide an R-value to, uh, the insulation inside the hangar building itself.
This is the final payment, though?
This is correct, sir.
But it's done?
It is done.
Okay. And, and, um...
I might add, the lighting improvements are dramatic.
Good day. The, uh, couple of those aircraft owners would be very happy. I know POS will be...
I think so.
Extremely happy.
I think so.
Uh, Mister Mayor, number thirteen, uh, Noel, um, when we sell a property, or when we convey a property per a development agreement, in the development agreement, do we keep ourselves liable for all kinds of cost in the future, or don't we convey it as-is? That, it seems like all these development agreements always have a couple more things we have to pay for. I know it's not a lot of money, but is it in the development agreement that we continue to pay some of these costs? Is that why we're doing this?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So we don't, it gets a little different. I guess we don't sell too many buildings. Usually we're selling lots. And so, you know, with the, especially with the Wonder Bread one, um, there was a lot of, uh, ins and outs and unknowns as a part of that project. We tried to set up the original development agreement where we were responsible for certain things in terms of making it a, a shovel-ready type location like we would one of our lots. So we were responsible for a lot of the things that were in the public right away. And again, it's a little different because, again, the building is at zero setback, whereas you'd normally have infrastructure that would come off of our mains and go in by service lines. So here, we were, we were responsible for more things right outside the building because that was the public way. Um, the two things that were being asked for increases on are the water stub disconnections and then the hazardous waste disposal. So as part of the project, uh, we did do some brownfield investigation previously to that when we bought it. Some ore was found when they were actually doing the work. Um, and in partnership with SingleSpeed for this great project, we had, we had taken on the previous, uh, hazardous waste responsibility, so we felt that it was fair to take on this. In terms of the water stub disconnections, um, there was multiple ones there because originally that was probably plotted as multiple lots, even though one building was built across it. So when they actually got down there to do the work, there was multiple stubs that the water works likes to have disconnected to avoid future problems on that. Again, that's in the public, um, side of things, so we felt that that was fair for us to pay those additional costs. The other, the only other thing in the Second Amendment was originally, we had just kind of done some estimates on the work that they were doing, um, for the building modifications, and there was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars originally given as a part of that grant. They did actually complete all of their, I think there was five different things they were doing with that, with those funds. They actually completed those with a savings of twenty-one thousand three oh four, um, but they did have, um, uh, about another eighty thousand in costs for some other things, specifically the dock modifications on the interior to make that work for all different sizes of trucks. Um, so we are recommending that we still give them that original hundred and sixty thousand dollar amount as kind of a partnership move, um, to help them pay for those additional dock modifications.
Okay, thanks.
How important is this?
I, I'm sure from SingleSpeed's perspective, it's very important. They are also trying to finalize out a lot of their historic documents and, and get the building finalized for their tax credits.
All right, any other questions, twelve, thirteen? Mister Morrissey?
Mister Mayor, I, I just wanted to add something, uh, regarding, uh, SingleSpeed and, uh, event that happened last week, uh, and thi- this may be sort of off this a little bit, but it just goes to, um, this destination point that has been added to downtown Waterloo. Tour de Louvre ended their evening at SingleSpeed, and, uh, it will, first of all, Tour de Louvre was attended by more people than I've ever been associated with at Tour de Louvre, and what a destination point. There was a crowd at, at, uh, SingleSpeed at the nine o'clock, uh, ending time that I have never seen before. It's just is a great venue, and what an addition to downtown Waterloo.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Mister Powers?
Yes.
Mister Lynn?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mister Welper?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number fourteen, please.
Mister Mayor.
Mister Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file, consider and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending the two thousand eight traffic code by rescinding section five four three through streets and deleting in its entirety subsection six Ainsborough Avenue and inserting a new subsection six Ainsborough Avenue.
Second. That motion has been made with the second.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch, uh, first of all, I want to send my condolences out to the Freshwater fam- believe it's the Freshwater family. I too lost a son when he was twenty-six, so I know what they're going through. But getting back to this study, I think we ought to do study on stop signs. For the other day, I was sitting out on my porch, and I was watching the stop signs that go east and west, Bayard and Birch. Eight cars went through there, six of them didn't stop, two of them did, three adults on bicycles, didn't even hesitate, they just went on through. And if this was, uh, at, uh, time school was out, we got a big influx of young little children riding up and down the street, and then somebody's gonna get killed at that intersection. And I don't know who does a study on stop signs, but if there's a professional that does studies on stop signs, he better come down and take a look at that one in my neighborhood, because they aren't paying any attention to the stop signs.
Well, it seems like that's a challenge with the enforcement. So if you give, uh, the chief your, uh, unless he has your address information...
He knows my address. Yeah.
Uh, we can, we can have somebody come and take a look, 'cause that's a, that's a enforcement, enforcement.
You can increase the general front a lot, thank you. And the bicycles, the ones that got me, three, these are three adults riding the bicycles. So there's gotta be some, uh, laws that pertain to them, too.
We're gonna get 'em.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
John, um, John Sherbin, seventeen-fifteen Robin Road. Yeah, I was, uh, sort of amazed. I, I feel very sorry for any kind of, of things that happen like that, accidents, 'cause we don't plan accidents. But I also feel that, that, uh, we're, we've got too much emotion showing in this. Um, I realize how bad this is for the father and the rest of the family. But I think probably we should relook at this information because slamming other people, um, is not the best way to do this. And everybody has an opinion, and I have an opinion, and that opinion is that that U.S. master plan that they use for traffic might be wrong. I think that maybe we should put a stop sign on the bike path or the footpath, because that would solve a lot of problems, wouldn't cost a lot of money, and it, it would be just as good, I think, personally. There's been, what, four accidents or so, or five accidents on that intersection in the last two years? Three of them was from somebody running the stop sign, the fourth one, I don't know, or deals in there. So there, the far as the, the report, we got a part of the report. We get part of the information. I feel great to be a part of this, uh, operation that people ask questions. I don't wanna pick on anybody. Uh, if the question is asked, it's not a bad question, and we get a good answer. We have a right to question some of the things that happen, because maybe that's wrong for this part of Waterloo. Maybe this is different in Cedar Falls. We've got a lot of people. We had a, a officer that was run over, um, in Cedar Falls on, on Viking Road, so I don't know.
Another minute.
Um, but, you know, I mean, this is, this stuff happens. But as far as, as, uh, you know, and the motions and stuff that are involved, that's the thing, but, but this is going back to where we, we putting the stop signs in. Uh, there's a lot of places that, that, uh, you know, my intersection where I live on, on, uh, Brennan Robin, had four or five accidents in one year. Luckily, nobody was hurt, but there was cars on their side and stuff. Nobody, luckily, I said, no serious industries, in injuries and stuff. So to just jump in and spend money, we've somehow gotta figure out how to quit spending money by just, you know, every time with something happens, we just throw money at it and think that's gonna cure it. And like I said, a four-way stop there, somebody's gonna run that because that's not a very clear, even if we put the flashing lights and stuff on it, there's other places that need it probably worse. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Don Sher, fourteen-fifteen Downing Avenue. After last week's city council meeting, I got in my truck and I drove out to the intersection to take a look at it. I see there's housing developments out that way. I saw the bike path. I noticed there were no stop signs on the bike path. I also noticed that once I went through the intersection on Ainsborough, the road dropped off. It turned into a farm road. It was a lot narrower than Ainsborough. Um, personally, I think on the side of Prudence, it wouldn't hurt to put a four-way stop there, 'cause in five years, you're gonna be arguing about a stoplight. The more important thing is, is the education on these bike paths. Now, I know you won't believe me when I tell you this due to my youthful appearance. Uh, I've been riding motorcycles for fifty years. I've never been down in the street because I know how to ride. I was trained. Uh, motorcycles don't belong on the road with cars and trucks, because there's no way that we can win an argument with a car or a truck. The same thing goes for bicycles. So if you wanna put all these bike paths in and get them in the traffic flow with the cars and the trucks, there needs to be some things done, uh, some actions taken, some training, some rules of the road, or you're gonna have more, uh, sadly, you're gonna have more grieving parents standing at this podium. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Counsel?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Sandy. Sandy, this ordinance has nothing to do with the four-way stop sign. Is that correct? This ordinance simply shortens the length of Ainsborough Avenue as a through street, correct?
Sandy Greco, Interpublic Works Director, yes. This is for Ainsborough. This has nothing to do with the four-way stop. This is just saying that Ainsborough being a through street starts from Rainbow Drive with the exception of fifteen signals and stops at Shawless.
Okay, and that's what we, that's what we argued about last week, the same thing. We're just talking about the through-street ordinance, not stop signs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Which basically means that Ainsborough would stop.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor?
Mister Welper?
But right now, Ainsborough doesn't stop. There's, there's the problem. There's the rub.
Anyone else?
Mister Mayor? Yeah, I, I would just like to point out that, uh, you know, since this conversation started, I've had multiple emails and texts, uh, I've had several phone conversations. Uh, virtually everybody I've talked to lives in that neighborhood. Excuse me, I live about six blocks from that intersection. And, uh, with the exception of, of one person that I talked to that's a member of the Freshwater family, everybody else, um, was opposed to the idea of putting in a four-way stop, uh, setup there. And, and it does seem to me, uh, if, if you look at the traffic there, virtually all the traffic on Ainsborough coming south turns onto Shawless. Uh, Shawless is the road that has all the traffic. So the Ainsborough traffic is already slowing down to turn left or right, because as Councilman Powers has said, uh, going south on Ainsborough, you're running out of paved road. Uh, so there is not much traffic that goes out there, especially with, uh, the way Kimball's set up. And then the other thing I did here, and I know, I think one of the audience members mentioned that, too, is, uh, suggestion that in, in many other cities that are, uh, maybe a little further along than Waterloo is on the biking situation, that where the, the stop signs need to be, and especially the ones with, uh, lighting that attract attention, are where the bikers and the walkers and the runners are, because they typically are wearing some kind of a headset or something that seems to cause them to be preoccupied. So I think, I really think, again, as we talked last week, we probably should step back and take a, a little bit bigger picture look at this.
Mister Mayor?
Go ahead.
Welper?
Mister Mayor, uh, regardless whether we put four stop signs out there or we move the two that are there, there's no guarantee that there will never be another accident at that intersection. We're all talking about all the people who are running stop signs. I think we all see it. Um, I think what's happening is that people are looking for traffic flow rather than traffic stop, and I think that's part of the reason why people aren't stopping. Uh, there is no hurry with this. Um, I begin, I went out and spoke with Mohammed this past week in regards to this, this, uh, intersection, uh, and as he stated last week, that there has been a definite increase in traffic on Shawless, like a thirty percent increase in traffic. I would like to table this just long enough to get a new study as to the traffic, on how many cars are moving on Shawless, Shawless and on, uh, on Ainsborough. Um, it, it's something that isn't gonna cost us anything. Um, how long does it take to do a traffic study? Week, two weeks?
We've had one.
I'm asking for a new traffic study.
Um, what we do is we take, okay, sorry. Um, Sandy Greco, Interpublic Works Director, what we would do is take an individual out and have them count traffic. What they do is they count turning movements, they count pedestrians, they count straight-through everything. Um, usually we do it during peak hours, which is in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening. Um, and that's what we did for this. We did it for a day. You know, we can do it for a day, we can do it for four days. We usually do midweek, we don't do Mondays and Fridays.
You can't just put that, uh, strip across the road that counts the cars?
We can put a s- but it doesn't get the turning movement.
I, I'm not really concerned so much about turning as I am the, the amount of traffic on both directions.
We can put our counters out there to do that. And usually we leave those from anywhere from twenty-four hours to five or six days. It just depends.
What would you recommend that we do?
Put four-way stops?
No, I wanna know traffic count.
That's the recommendation.
If we do a traffic count, we could do it for a week.
Okay. I make a motion that we table this for one week, or we better say two weeks.
Sandy?
Mister Mayor?
Let me, let me, okay, so I just need to ask a question about Mister Welper. So right now, we're towards the end of the, uh, biking season. So will there be the same amount of traffic with walking and hours and stuff right now than there would be if you did it earlier in the year? Or do we even know that?
Um, vehicles, it's not gonna make a difference, but it's darker earlier now, too, and dark in the morning. It could make, and it's getting cold, so it could make a difference on the bikes and the pedestrians.
And Mister Amos, Mister Welper, uh, just made a motion to table this. Um, if we get a second, then we have some discussions about the table, so...
I'll, I'll second it.
We have an open motion already on the table.
He made a motion to table.
That overrides it.
So that overrides it.
Can I make a comment, though?
I made it, I made a second.
There's a second. All right, Mister Power, Mister Amos and then Mister Powers.
Uh, my question was, is, is, I understand Councilman Welper is asking for another study, but what was the date of the study that has already been done?
You may wanna stay close, Sandy.
Um, I believe it was two weeks ago tomorrow that we did it.
Mister Powers?
That was my same question, and then I too had some calls from citizens out in the Orange County or Orange Township area. And once you sat down or had conversations with them, rather than accepting their initial response and giving the response that I talked to them about, and that is, Ainsborough at forty-five miles an hour or thirty-five miles an hour drops off into an unimproved road. That road needs to be stopped. Ainsborough needs to stop. We're gonna end up having more accidents out there. I think there needs to be, as Mr. Sher's, uh, looked at, and I did as well, stop signs on the trails. There's trails, stop signs all the way from the swimming, or the, uh, Birch's, uh, water park, all the way out until you get to, other than at, uh, twenty-one, there is a push-button traffic control. There are stop signs all the way through until you get to Ainsborough, and there were none. We need to, as this piece is going to grow, we need to get stop signs on the trails at that intersection and stop traffic. Traffic increase, when you look at everybody that's going south, and a lot of people do that leave the business development areas on Ainsborough heading south, going back to their homes or going to Dizert, or going wherever they go, there's a lot more traffic on Ainsborough that needs to be controlled and stopped. I've had several conversations that way as well. But when I talk to the people from Orange, I think if they're, I think that that conversation is where they agree with me, it needs to be stopped, other than it's a farm-to-market road. Well, I appreciate that, but farm-to-market stops occasionally because they're going much slower, uh, with the heavy trucks they drive, but it's also the safer piece. We need to stop Ainsborough in all four directions, or two directions, and Shawless needs to stop, because that is the pattern of that traffic going west from the, uh, park, the water park.
All right.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Mister Lynn?
Sandy, again, this ordinance is not about stop signs, is it?
No, it's not.
It's simply about a through-street. I don't know why we keep arguing about stop signs. That's coming up.
If the stop signs does not get approved when it comes up, then we would come back and change Ainsborough as a through-street to the corporate city limits.
The one has to do with the other.
Yes.
But if we, even if we pass this and you didn't put the stop signs in, it wouldn't make any difference with it. You could still stop Ainsborough at Shawless, which you probably should anyway.
Yes.
Thanks. Mister Mayor?
Mister Morrissey?
Well, one of the things that, that I wanna point
One of the things that I want to point out, speaking to Councilman Welper's motion to table, is that, you know, if he's requesting to have a traffic study done, this motion here is just to approve it for the second time, which means that we don't even have a motion to suspend the rules, so we're not going to be doing that tonight. So it's going to have to go next week for a third reading, if it would pass tonight anyway. And given if it would pass, next week, what would happen, as we discussed last week, would be then that would be the first time that the stop sign ordinance would come up. So that gives us one week, and even with the passing of the four-way stop next week, we got more than enough time if a study is something that Councilman Welper wants done. But on top of that, I mean, if we have a study that just was done within the last two weeks, and we've got lower probable traffic volumes bicycle-wise, runner-wise, and traffic-wise, then why would we want to study at a time when there's lessening of that traffic? It just doesn't seem to make much sense. But at the same time, we still have time if Mohammed and Sandy wants to do another study to do this and move forward with this, Councilman Welper. That's all I'm saying.
Drive, Costo. I'm not looking for a complete study. I'm looking for a traffic count on the two directions, Shallas and Ainsborough. That's all I'm asking.
And I understand that, Councilman Welper. All I'm saying is, this could be passed, and we still have to have a next, next week reading, and we could ask for that to be done prior to that without having to table this.
It's up to the council. I've made my motion.
And to add, and just a little clarification, too, with the table, and then also with some of the comments that have been made about making an emotional decision, I just want to remind people that Mohammed has worked for the city of Waterloo from two thousand and two to the present. Traffic signal design studies, grant applications, management, reviewing of plans, coordinating with engineers. He's been an expert witness since two thousand and two for court cases involving crashes at signalized intersections. He was in another country director general overseas for the Bureau of Consulting and Contractor Affairs for a time. He was technical advisor for a traffic control company. He was an instructor at a university, a research assistant at the Iowa State, Iowa State University. He was a transportation specialist at Iowa State University as well. He was a traffic analysis. He was an associate engineer for the city of Waterloo. He was a civil engineer in another country. He has a PhD in civil engineering, engineering and traffic and transportation, MS in civil engineering, a BS in civil engineering, and an advanced-level general certificate of education of physics and chemistry and mathematics. So to say that any decision that he's making or Sandy is making based upon an emotional response, I take exception to those that made those comments. This man is recruited weekly, monthly, to come and work other places around the country. So just with regards to the tabling and doing a study and saying the emotional, emotional decision, I take exception to that with the track record of this gentleman. Mr. Welper.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Powers, you got a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment to much of what you just said. At some point, this council has to start realizing that we've got experts that are our staff members, and we have to start showing some respect to our senior leadership throughout this city. I think it's appalling that we always want to try to argue about our experts, and we want to humiliate them. I just have to get that one off my shoulder. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I totally respect Mohammed, everything that he's done.
I'm talking about every one of them.
Absolutely. All I'm saying is that I'm looking for traffic flow rather than traffic stop, and if this is a situation where we can do that, then I'm in favor of it. But I wanted to know how many cars are traveling in both directions. I don't care about bicycles or people walking. All I want to know is cars, trucks.
Mohammed, if you had anything to say, you can.
Mohammed Elahi, traffic engineer. We already have the counts, and we have the peak hour counts, and in Waterloo, the daily counts, that's what you're looking for, is about nine point eight to ten. The peak hour traffic is about nine point eight to ten percent of the daily volume. So from peak hour volumes that we have already counted, we can pretty much, pretty sure say what is the daily volume, so we don't have to count it. And if you look at the, the two analysis for the stop controls, we look at traffic flow in terms of delays. So it shows actually four-way stops at diner sections will have less delays than two-way stops, and there's reasons for it. But the software projects that once we put four-way stops, traffic would flow better. You have less delays if that's what you're looking for. I don't know what, what kind of other studies we'll do, if we even get the daily volumes, which we can, we can pretty much get them from the peak hours we have already.
All right, so there is a motion to table on the floor right now. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Lind.
No.
Mr. Amos.
No.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
No.
Mr. Powers.
No.
All right, and we have an original motion that was read. Madam Deputy Clerk. That's the motion to consider, to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time.
Okay. Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
And I want to clarify, this is not, did anything do with the stop signs? Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
No.
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
If I could just add, this whole emotional thing did not have to do with Mohammed. It had to do with the city council. So that was not an inference on Mohammed, and if somebody thought it was, they're mistaken. I also hope we do not get to the point where a city councilman cannot question the department head without it being some personal issue. And if it is, then those people probably need to get off the council, because I think that's what we're here for, is to ask questions. And we can ask questions in a reasonable manner. Part of that conversation last week was at Ridgeway and Hammond. Mr. Elahi's motion was to do away with four-way stop. Here, we're doing a one-hundred-and-eighty-degree opposite situation. That's why I asked that question. So.
I respect that, Mr. Schmidt. We, we should, and we most generally, or positively, should be asking questions. That's the way we become informed, is you ask questions. But there isn't, there's a time when you do that. It's not always when the camera's running. There's times when you can come in and, and do some research and get in, and get in and ask the questions so that we can move on forward with reasonable answers to all of these questions. And I'm not disregarding what you said about we need to be able to ask questions. I certainly ask a lot of questions, and I think, I think if you went around this room with our senior leadership, that they, you would find that I asked several questions when the camera's not necessarily on for commercials.
But unfortunately, the folks that watch these meetings from home and the folks who are in the audience have no idea, and that's why they say, how does that council make those decisions they make? Because they never talk about anything. They never ask any questions, so the public is uninformed, and I think that's what council members do.
And if they would have watched the meeting last week, they would have saw when you questioned Mohammed, you were very cynical. You stated, well, it's probably pretty much your opinion. It is absolutely my opinion, and I'm telling you my opinion, just like you sat here and gave yours. And it was cynical, and it wasn't appreciated, and you asked him the question about whether or not there was an emotional decision that was made, and that's why I referred, who was that? Who? Okay, you're talking from the back of the room. You had an opportunity to come up, right? And you had your chance, and nobody talked. Impartial about what? And you aren't supposed to address the council from back there. So that's why I put his record out, so we can show he has a track record and experience working in situations like this, and it was not an emotional decision that was made for him to bring that forth to the council that was stated last week. Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Number fifteen is a motion to accept and place on file the arbitrage test results resulting or reflecting that no payment is due to the Internal Revenue Service for the general obligation bonds, Series twenty-ten A issued in June two thousand and ten. The Series twenty-eleven A issued in June two thousand and eleven, and the Series twenty-twelve A bonds issued in June two thousand and twelve. The Series twenty-twelve B bonds issued in June two thousand and twelve, and the sewer revenue bond, Series twenty-eleven A issued in July two thousand and eleven. Number sixteen is a motion approving the purchase of neighborhood security pole cameras from Celebrite in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and directing the use of funds designated by city council. Number seventeen is a request to waive the ten-mile residency restriction for a police officer.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. On sixteen and seventeen, Chief, could you comment? Or I think, you have a comment, Mr. Dryer? All right.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. This is on seventeen. This is emotional on my part in the respect that is the ten-mile limit within Black Hawk County at least, so they pay taxes in the county, or at least in the city? And that's emotional for me because my taxes keep going up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief.
I'm going to start with number sixteen. Dan Trelka, Chief of Police. I would ask the council if we could take a pause on this, give us some more time, and I'm going to, for several reasons. First of all, I'm a huge advocate of the cameras. I want the cameras. Mohammed has come up with a very good plan for implementing the public cameras, and I feel this just may be a Band-Aid for that whole project. And the CIP budgets have been established for several departments, and we listed what we, what the department heads feel is important. I would hope we could pause this for a few months because what I'm hoping is, down the road, we'll have some projects come in under budget, and we can utilize that money to fund this twenty-five thousand dollars for pole cameras. We also want to look at our alternatives at the police department. One thing we're looking at is potentially taking one of our drug forfeiture cars and putting cameras in there and being able to move that throughout the city. Spend the twenty-five thousand dollars on that. We're, we're actually waiting to have one of those brought here so we can see how it functions. The cameras aren't going to be a silver bullet. The FBI just released the latest crime statistics, so I was curious as to what Dubuque's crime statistics were. And I don't mean to disparage Dubuque, but Dubuque and Waterloo have the same crime rate. Since two thousand and nine, Dubuque's crime rate has gone up thirty-four percent. Since two thousand and nine, ours has gone down twenty-four percent. And now we're at a point where we're even. We have the same crime rate. This isn't going to be the silver bullet. I am an advocate. I want to get the system up and running, but I don't want to use a Band-Aid at this point and rob Peter to pay Paul and deny some of our other departments much-needed funding because I think when we submitted our CIP budgets, I think ultimately we received about fifty percent what we were asking for. So every project that we've identified is important to each department. There's also, I was presented today with a policy that Dubuque has for where these cameras will be implemented in the community or utilized in the community, and it's a very good policy. It's a city policy. It's guidelines for identifying locations and where they'll be implemented. So that's something the council, I think, needs to consider. So I'd like to hit the pause button if, you know, my recommendation is, could we wait until the last quarter of this fiscal year to see where we're at with our CIP and then proceed from there?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I had intended to actually make a motion to table this for thirty days because I know MediaCom has been working on whether or not they might be able to facilitate these camera locations. I know they've been walking or working with IT Department Head Youngblood, and he's not here to speak about that, but, so I'd be happy to make that motion to table this for sixty days, pending further investigation.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a friendly amendment that it be tabled indefinitely.
Second.
I'd be fine with that.
For?
Sixteen.
For number sixteen, Mr. Mayor.
We'll bring that up then, Dan, when, we'll bring that back up when you and MediaCom and anybody else has had that conversation.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay to, will you just yield a minute, your chief, so I could? One of the things that happened since the last time that we had talked about this was I had contact with one of the council people over in Dubuque, and they had sent me some information. And one of the things that I found, other than discussing with Director Funchus about the racial equity and social justice toolkit, was, it was rather striking from, from Dubuque that they had this safety and security camera acceptable use policy that was in place for them to decide anything about and what, how they were going to base getting security cameras, where they were going to put them. It included issues about discrimination versus non-discrimination, and it was basically a policy that governed it. And when I talked to Chief Trelka about this, he said that Waterloo really doesn't have anything like this. And so to me, part of, of doing anything with the cameras needs to, I believe, include before that are setting a policy like Dubuque has for the acceptable use of those cameras, Mr. Mayor. So that's why I speak to the motion to table indefinitely this, number sixteen.
All right. Any other questions about this? Madam Deputy Clerk, the motion to table, and then afterwards, Chief, if you'll answer Mr. Dryer's question. So motion to table number sixteen.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
No.
Mr. Amos.
Yes. All right, that item's tabled indefinitely, and we'll bring it back. Could you respond to Mr. Dryer for number seventeen?
This officer lives in the city limits right now, and these are unique circumstances. This officer works in one of our specialized units. He deals with our most violent offenders in the community, deals with them face-to-face, arresting many on several occasions. His wife is also a government employee, not employed by the city. Her employer does not have a residency requirement. She also deals with people who are going through the struggles, the worst struggles in their life. And she has received threats, and the officer has received threats when he's been away from work. So these are unique circumstances. I do agree with the officer. I feel he should be given consideration to live outside that ten-mile limit. He's asked that it be restricted to twenty miles, which was the previous policy before this. So he brought it to me. I brought it to the mayor, the mayor and I talked about it, and we realized this is ultimately a council decision, but what he and his family have experienced is abhorrent.
He asked about the county, would be in or out the county?
He would likely move outside the county.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Chief, would this also help you from a recruiting standpoint as far as, would that open up the boundaries as far as you being able to hire individuals?
It would. It's my opinion that it would certainly assist in our recruiting efforts.
Mr. Mayor. I think the state code addresses it to some extent where you can I think the state code addresses it to some extent where you can have, the cities can set reasonable distances, and I think under this circumstance, although I want everybody to live in Waterloo, even everybody, all employees, but reasonable distances for certain cases like this, I think, is something that we should consider and pass. The state law addresses it.
And Mr. Mayor, that, that's, Chief Trelka, that's what we're doing here, this is taking one instance only. This is taking, this, it's not setting a policy.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Items 15 and 17, Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welpert.
Yes.
All right, those items carry.
Motion to adjourn.
Most have been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.